I want to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, May the sixth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're glad to have you all here in attendance with us this morning. We have so many guests with us. So thank you all for being here with us on this rainy morning. I know we have lots of people watching online. So welcome and thank you for tuning in. At this time, I'd like to welcome forward our director of our Public Health Department here at Denton County, Dr. Matt Richardson. He's going to lead us in our invocation. And in our pledges, we led by Captain Roger Whitefield. Please stand. I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Wanted to start this morning with Psalm forty-two eleven. Why are you cast down, oh my soul? And why are you in turmoil within me? Hope in God, for I shall again praise him, my salvation, and my God, if you'll pray with me. Our Father, we thank you for so many good things that come from you. Father, we thank you for the rain. But as your children, we thank you, and then we ask protection from you. So we we ask that you protect those from flooding, from severe storms, from severe weather. So Father, we thank you for this time of year and renewal and refreshing. And Father, we also ask for your protection from danger. Father, this morning we bring to you those who are suffering. Father, we bring to you the names on our hearts, the names that we know, friends, family, neighbors. Father, we bring to you people suffering, and we ask for your healing hand. We ask for peace. We ask for mercy. We ask for grace. Father, we want these things for the people we love. We want them for ourselves, and we know that that can be restored through you. Father, we thank you that we can bring requests to you like this. Father, we continue to ask for protection, and we ask for your blessing on those who protect us. Father, we ask that you hold them strong and steady for the public service they provide. Father asks you be with Commissioners' Court, ask you be with these leaders, strengthen them in times of of service, Father. And then we ask that you be with our friend Bobby. Commissioner Mitchell, Father, we bring her name to you this morning because we miss her. We miss her presence. We want to hear her laugh and see her smile. And Father, we ask you bring her to us shortly. Father, we ask these things, we make these requests because of your son and his sacrifice, and we do that in his name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now to the Texas flag, honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, thank you, Dr. Richardson. Thank you. Mr. White, all right, let's go to we have no one registered for public comments this morning. And so but I would like to for us to go over to our resolutions, awards, and presentations. And let's start with item three A, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing Oveah Henning for designing the twenty twenty-five Juneteenth flag. And are y'all here with us this morning? Good Mr. Cox, good morning. Want to come forward and explain what we're doing this morning? That'd be great.
Good morning, and thank you very much for having us. I have not met the winner. I was going to meet her this morning. I'm assuming she's not here yet. I don't see anybody standing up. And so
I'll be happy to hold this item till a little bit later in the meeting. If she's planning to attend, it may just be late.
The parents were planning to bring her
Okay.
this morning.
Well, I'll be happy to for us to wait a few moments. We got other proclamations. Does that sound good?
That sounds
All right, perfect. Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll put that one on hold. Totally understand on a rainy morning. Okay, let's let's go to item three B, approval of a proclamation recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month, and May eighth as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day and any appropriate action. We have several people with us this morning. Would you like to come forward and introduce the item? Pam was here. I believe Emily Russell as well with Cook's Children's. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Emily Russell. I'm program coordinator for the Cook Children's Center for Community Health. And I represent the Mental Health and Resiliency Action Team, which you guys may know as WATCH. It's had a name change. But we work together with local organizations, including the Behavioral Health Leadership Team, in a collaborative effort to spread awareness and education about mental health issues and improve children's health across Denton County. Mental health is essential to health and well-being, and is just as important as physical health. The Declaration of a National State of Emergency in Child and Adolescent Mental Health by major pediatric health organizations remains the same for our children locally, and remains a pressing issue today. Children's mental health is a strong determinant of overall quality of life, which includes a child's ability to reach certain developmental and emotional milestones, engage with others in social settings, and cope with life's challenges. Nearly fifty thousand school-aged children need mental health treatment or counseling in Denton County, and there is hope. Mental health illnesses both are common and treatable, and our group works together to bring education and resources to the families in Denton County who need it. We're grateful for this proclamation and for helping us bring awareness and education of mental health issues and resources available in our community, and for recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month with this proclamation.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. Pam, did y'all want to add to that? Or Lisa?
I just want to thank you for your ongoing support. It means the world to all of us, and especially our children. Now is the time, and our children need it the most. So thank you so much, Commissioners and Judge Eads.
Absolutely. Did you want to say anything, Lisa? Okay. This is a court proclamation regarding Mental Health Month and Children's Mental Health Day in Denton County, twenty twenty-five, and where as addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of Denton County. Whereas the citizens of Denton County value their overall health and that of their families and fellow citizens, and are proud to support observances such as Mental Health Month and Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, whereas twenty-nine percent of children have a diagnosable mental health condition, and nearly one in five school-aged children has missed more than one day of school due to mental or emotional concerns. Whereas forty-eight percent of parents experienced difficult addressing needed mental health care in their community, and the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for individuals and families places upon our community is a critical responsibility. And whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their overall health and well-being. Whereas each citizen, local business, school, governmental agency, healthcare provider, and faith-based organization shares the burden of mental health concerns and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness, recovery, and support prevention efforts. Whereas the Cooks Children's Center for Community Health and United Way of Denton County, through their unique community partnerships and prevention-based approaches to serving children and adolescents, are effectively addressing the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community. Whereas it is appropriate that a month be set aside each year for the direction of our thoughts towards mental health education and the support of treatment and recovery, and a day be set aside each year for the direction of our thoughts towards our children's mental health and well-being. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-five as Mental Health Awareness Month, and May the eighth, twenty twenty-five, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. We call upon all our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every person's mental health needs to unite in the observance of such exercises as will commit the people of Denton County to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, and steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Done in open court this sixth day of May twenty twenty-five upon a motion by the chair.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Well, I want to thank you all for being here. Although we're observing one month and one day, it should be every day and every month, and we know that. And I think as a proclamation says, we're really calls upon all of us to be part of this, part of this challenge, to look for signs of 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 people needing help and crying out for help. There's those small, sweet signals that people send out. And I think it's important that proclamations such as today, put this as an awareness for us. If you're watching this video, if you see, if you see somebody who needs help. Pam, would you give our hotline number and ways for which we people can read, can seek help?
Absolutely.
Is there is help for you?
So nine eight eight is one number that individuals can call, and one eight hundred seven six two oh one five seven. And please call if you need help, because help is out there for you. Thank you.
I will tell you, it's amazing. From a personal standpoint, I'll just be candid with you. I'll tell you, the the amount of love that I have personally experienced from people in this room and across this county over the last couple of weeks with all the issues with Commissioner Mitchell's family and the loss that that was for all of us. It was a significant loss personally to me and to many others. And and the 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 texts and the calls and the notes and stuff that I know that I've received for people just wanted to check in on their strong friends. And I think that's something that we should and I tell you that story so that other people will follow that model. It's important to check on check on people. I know you're busy. I know you're this. How are you? Not just how's the situation, but how are you doing? And so I just want to thank so many people. Pam, you're one of those, you know, who did that. You understand the importance of checking in on folks. And so I think that is important for us to do, and for people to be able to have an opportunity to talk things through with their with with friends and kind of realizing, be vulnerable, and also to feel love from other people. And I think that's just part of any kind of coping mechanism. And I think it's important that we all talk about things like that. That's why I'm doing it today. So it's important. It's important. So and and when incidents happen, I think it's not about the day of or in the middle of an incident. So many times, we're conditioned to handle an incident, incident management. You're dealing with details. It's things that happen a week later, a month later, a year later. So it's important to check in on your check in on people. You never know what people are dealing with. So I just wanted to mention that. Is there anyone else who has anything to add? All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for being here. Thank you. Anyone that's from the agencies here, come down with a All right. Next, we have a let's go to. Those are great folks, and I appreciate the meaningful work that they do each and every day. Great partners. Let's just go to item three C, approval of a proclamation recognizing May the fourth through the tenth, twenty twenty-five, as National Correctional Officers Week. You know, we do have our sheriff and leadership from our sheriff's office here. Do y'all want to intro the item, Sheriff?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
I stand up here in front of you quite a bit talking about our detention officers. And I spend the majority of my time up here talking about the ones we don't have, the ones we wish we had, the ones, you know, the overtime. And we don't talk enough about the ones that we do have.
That's right.
The ones who have stuck with us through this, the ones who who are having to work that overtime instead of being at home with their families. And I appreciate this proclamation and recognition. And, you know, these men and women are remarkable. They do a thankless job. They're literally behind the scenes, stuck between walls where people, law-abiding people, don't get to see them or or interact with them. But they're the backbone of this agency. We cannot function without them. And I've said this on many occasions. I've been doing this type of work for almost forty years. And I don't think I could do what they do. They work these long shifts, and they are locked up with some really bad people. And they have to take care of those folks because we're mandated by law to take care of them physically, a lot of times mentally, spiritually. And they're charged with protecting some bad people who really don't like them. And it's a tough, tough job. And I just want to thank you guys for this recognition and for for this week. And and I know some of these men and women sitting behind me here are ready to get the heck out of here so they can either go home and be with their families, or go back to doing the job that they do so well. And I just want to commend them. And and I don't, we don't have conversations enough about the ones who are here, the ones who have stuck it out when we were at under thirty percent staffed, and they were working with without being able to take vacations or days off or take holidays. And they stuck with us. And I'm very appreciative of that. I love them for it. So thank you, guys.
I think it's a great observation, because we do talk about the ones who how do we onboard the people? How do we? How do we welcome the people? And I think it's important that we do think, take a moment such as today to thank the people who who are with us. The Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the sixth day of May, twenty twenty-five, consider the following proclamation. Whereas the week of May the fourth, twenty twenty-five, through May the tenth, twenty twenty-five, is a time to show our appreciation and recognize the corrections profession and the difficult and at times dangerous nature of corrections work. And whereas the Denton County jail operates twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, the detention officers are dedicated professionals, ready to persevere through any challenge that comes their way. These men and women are the backbone of the sheriff's department, and they consistently exemplify professionalism, integrity, and strength in a job that is often taken for granted. Every day, they endure what the public does not see by protecting and managing criminal offenders in a safe environment. And whereas our detention officers are highly trained professionals who invest hundreds of hours in specialized training and continuous education to ensure the safety of themselves and the inmates. These officers play a critical role in maintaining public safety. They work closely with perpetrators and are expected to carry out their duties in a fair, ethical, and humane manner. Despite being aware of the details of the crimes committed by those within their care and custody, they're expected to remain impartial and perform their duties even in the face of verbal insults, threats, and assaults during each shift. And whereas it is appropriate to set aside a week and recognize the vital and critical role our detention officers provide in keeping our communities safe. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, does hereby proclaim the week of May the fourth through the tenth, twenty twenty-five, as Correctional Officers Week in Denton County. We urge our citizens to join the Commissioners' Court in commending all detention officers for their dedication to duty, professionalism, and commitment to duty, professionalism and commitment to protecting and managing criminal offenders in a safe environment. Done in open court this the sixth day of May twenty twenty five upon a motion made by, motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? I just want to echo again what the sheriff had to say about the great work that y'all do. We could not, we would not have a civil society if we didn't have your profession and the people answering the call to public service such as each and every one of y'all. So I want to thank y'all for the good and noble work that y'all do. Thank y'all. You make us proud each and every day. Any other comments? All right, hearing none. We do have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your hands. Y'all come down here.
Thank you again folks. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, no, not at all. All right. Next, let's go to item three D and I believe we have Judge Jones here with her team. Item three D is approval of a proclamation recognizing May twenty twenty five as All Rise National Treatment Court Month. And if y'all will come forward and if y'all want to extend any comments. Good morning. Go right ahead. If y'all want to introduce, have any opening comments about our item, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you Judge and Commissioners. I'm Judge Deborah Jones, Judge of the four sixty-seven District Court. Thank you for taking the moment today to recognize the work of the Denton County Courts. I will tell you that Denton County is fortunate to have not only felony drug treatment court, but also veterans treatment court and mental health treatment court, as well as family drug treatment court. I'm judge over the family drug treatment court. This program represents a powerful collaboration between the courts, child welfare, treatment providers and our community. Together, we are not only addressing substance use, but restoring families in family drug treatment court safely and with dignity. Family Drug Court is about second chances. It's about providing parents the structure, support and accountability they need to overcome addiction and become the parents that we expect for them to be. The work is not easy, but the impact is undeniable. Fewer foster care, fewer foster care placements, reduced recidivism and most importantly, reunified families who are healthier and stronger. I want to thank each of you for the work that you have done with Family Drug Treatment Court. And we look forward to the collaboration working with the Commissioners Court going forward. Thank you Judge.
Thank you. And thank you for the great work you do. I'll read this proclamation. This is whereas according to All Rise Treatment Courts are the most successful intervention in our nation's history for leading people with substance use and mental health disorders out of the justice system and into lives of recovery, stability and health. And whereas there are now more than four thousand treatment courts nationwide. And Denton County has five specialized treatment courts to include the Family Drug Court, Drug Treatment Court, Mental Health Treatment Court, DBI Treatment Court and the Veterans Treatment Court. Whereas treatment courts are the cornerstone of justice reform sweeping the nation and have transformed the way the justice system responds to people with substance use and mental health disorders by combining accountability with evidence-based treatment. And whereas treatment courts annually refer more than a hundred fifty thousand people to life-saving treatment and recovery support services and save an average of six thousand dollars for every individual they serve. And whereas according to All Rise Treatment Courts significantly improve substance use disorder treatment outcomes, substantially reduce addiction and related crime and do so at less expense than any other justice strategy. And whereas treatment courts improve education, employment, housing, financial stability, promote family reunification, reduce foster care placements. And whereas treatment courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health and demonstrate that when one person rises, we all rise. Now therefore it be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim May twenty twenty five as All Rise National Treatment Court Month in Denton County. Done in open court this the sixth day of May twenty twenty five upon a motion made by the chair, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? Well, I want to say, I think each and every one of us on this dais have seen firsthand the great work that y'all do through, whether it be graduations or other celebratory events in your courtrooms with the people who, as the proclamation says, were held accountable, but also were given a second chance and were given an opportunity to reunify with their families and to become clean and return to a productive role in our society that we call here in Denton County. And I just want to thank all our judges and thank the staff. Thank y'all for being here, everyone involved in that. It's, it's detailed work. It's, you have to be patient as you're holding people accountable as you're going through the process. And I appreciate the meaningful life-changing work that y'all are all about. And so I just want to thank, I'm glad we're bringing awareness to this. So thank you, each and every one of you. Members, do you have any other comments? All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, now let's, Donald, do we have a rest of our guests here today? Or we could, I don't mind waiting as long as you, if you want to wait. Okay, you're fine to wait? Or you want to proceed? Proceed? Yes, sir. Okay, let's go back to, we'll go to item three A, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing Ovea Henning for designing the twenty twenty five Juneteenth flag and any appropriate action. Good morning, sir. We're glad to have you here. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much. I do apologize for the absence of the student and her parents.
No problem.
As you may remember, Denton County has its own Juneteenth flag.
Yes.
Because the one that is considered the national flag was created in Boston. And, you know, that's just not good enough. And so every year we have a, hold a contest in the public schools to determine a a flag design to be flown at activities around the county, whichever ones choose to do so. We've had winners in the past from Louisville, Sanger, Denton, and this year the winner was from Little Elm.
Great.
The flat, her design, the objective of the contest is not necessarily to find the person with the greatest artistic skill, but the one who comes up with a unique idea. And this year's winner created a design that shows a bird, a phoenix, rising from ashes, saying, essentially saying, from Juneteenth, we rise.
I like that.
And so this is her design.
Oh, I like that. Oh, perfect. Well, we'll do, let me read this proclamation and then we will do some photographs with that. I think that'd be, it's lovely. Does that sound good, Donald? Okay. This is a court proclamation recognizing Ovea Henning. Whereas on June the nineteenth eighteen sixty-five, Texas became the fourth and the last state and territory to end enslavement. And in nineteen seventy-nine, the Texas legislature formally designated June nineteenth as Emancipation Day in the state of Texas. And whereas in twenty twenty-one, the nineteenth of June was unanimously designated as Juneteenth National Freedom Day by the United States Congress and endorsed by the President of the United States. And that same year, the day was similarly acknowledged by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas. And whereas in twenty twenty-one, Juneteenth University, a Denton County-based nonprofit corporation initiated an annual countywide contest to select a local flag honoring June nineteenth. Whereas in twenty twenty-five, a flag designed, created by Ms. Noveah Henning of Little Elm, Texas was selected as the winner of the fourth annual flag design contest. And whereas to be in solidarity with the nation, the national popular Juneteenth emblem appears on the reverse side of Ms. Henning's flag design. And whereas Ms. Henning's design will be known as the Juneteenth Henning Flag and will be honorably displayed at various twenty twenty-five Juneteenth events across Denton County. And now therefore it be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas does hereby recognize Noveah Henning in Denton County and encourages all citizens to join together in making June nineteenth twenty twenty-five a day of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people. Done in open court this the sixth day of May twenty twenty five upon a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any other discussion? It's a lovely flag and I appreciate you being up here today. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your hands. Okay, Donald, we'll take a picture right here. Let's go back. Members, are there any items on our consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve it as presented? We have a motion by Commissioner Williams? Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Our consent agenda today is some item two A, approval of the order of making appointments. Item two B is approval of payroll. Let's proceed to item five A, approval of the bill report payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT, Interest and DA Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you Judge. I have two additions today. The first is to JKO Window Coverings, DBA got you one covered. And it's for twenty-three hundred dollars. And the second is to Don Weyer, Texas Assessor Collector for one thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Perfect way of a motion to approve that as amended. Motion by Commissioner Falconer? Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Thank you. Next is item five B, approval to rescind and repeal the April twenty-second twenty twenty-five Denton County Commissioners Court Order number two five zero three one six and approval of an order authorizing issuance of Denton County, Texas Permanent Improvement and Refunding Bond Series twenty twenty-five specifying the terms and features of said bonds, leaving a continuing direct annual ad verum tax for the payment of said bonds, establishing procedures for the sale and delivery of the bonds and delegating matters related to the sale and issuance of the bonds to an authorized county official providing an effective date. This is from the Auditor's Office of Bond Counsel of Denton County. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, approval of a contract with Dallas Harmony Construction for the jail kitchen laundry replacement at the Denton County Jail in the amount of three hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred forty-three dollars and forty-five cents in the Texas Interlocal Purchasing System, TIPS Cooperative Contract two three zero one zero four zero two. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Six B, a presentation of Public Power Pool P three regarding utility expenditures and cost savings in deregulated areas of Denton County, along with an overview of the upcoming requests for proposals that P three will be issuing in future utility service years. Good morning Scott.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners. Just a little background. In two thousand and one, Denton County joined the CUC Aggregation Project to aggregate electric utilities in deregulated areas. This program has now changed. The name is now Public Power Pool or P three as we regard it. They're required to provide a report every year of savings to the county on the areas where we use their, their contract. And they're in the process of issuing a new RFP. Mr. David Quinn with P three is here with us today to give you a real quick overview of the savings Denton County has over the last year and the new RFP that we're going to be, they're going to be issuing this month.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Quinn. I'm the Program Manager for Public Power Pool. Uh, we're a five oh one C four political subdivision corporation created by Texas counties with the intention of negotiating lower electricity rates and a better quality contract by procuring in bulk. Uh, we currently have ninety-nine members, um, on the second page of the presentation, which is actually inside that folder that I just handed out on the right-hand side. The second page shows you the current membership list. We have most of the counties in the metroplex, heavy representation in North Texas. How do I move this? There. And I think the, the benefit of the program speaks for itself. On page three, you can see our calculation of savings achieved in each of our, each of our, in, over the course of our nine procurements to date, group by procurement, we've saved members two hundred and five point five million dollars. Uh, the number for Denton County is a little bit smaller, uh, we're looking at two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars saved, uh, since two thousand and two. With, this is of course, in, with the understanding that we only have fifteen of your accounts, uh, mainly, uh, a few in Denton, Aubrey, and Louisville, uh, is where we have our concentration of accounts. Most of your other accounts are not in the competitive part of ERCOT, so we're unable to bring those into the contract. Now, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, uh, saved since you all joined is our own calculation in-house. Um, and that is comparing the contracted price we've achieved for you all, uh, compared to the market settling price for electricity every day since the program began. Now, the P U C has us calculate savings in a different way, on shown on page five, what we call the House Ball Thirty-Six Ninety-Three Report. That shows that you, just in twenty twenty-four, you saved seventy-six thousand, uh, using their methodology of calculating savings against a benchmark average. So seventy-six thousand dollars saved in twenty twenty-four. Your current contract rate is five point six nine, shown on page six. We've issued these budget reports, uh, every year so that we, so that you can, uh, budget for more accurately and know exactly how much, uh, to, to, uh, budget for for your electricity expenses under the P three program. Now, the current contract expires at the end of this year, and we are out in the marketplace. We've been talking to retailers, and we have been visiting with members about continuing on with the program, uh, for a new contract beginning in January twenty twenty-six. Uh, page seven here shows you what electricity markets have been doing. We've seen, um, a, a, a pretty big, uh, price run-up there in, at the end of twenty twenty-two into twenty twenty-three, subsequently has dropped off. The forward pricing, as it looks right now today, um, I should say, at the end of last week, for a new contract beginning in twenty twenty-six, is shown on the page, it should have a number, it should say page eight, but it's blank on the bottom right-hand corner. Twenty twenty-six is priced at about six point two five cents, twenty twenty-seven at just over six cents, twenty twenty-eight drops down to five point seven nine. We've been watching this curve drop down over the past few weeks, so it was actually a ten percent decline, uh, two weeks ago. It's bumped back up in the past couple of days, but we are seeing a general drift downwards with this pricing curve, which puts us in a good position as we look to go out to the marketplace. We have designed a new procurement, uh, which will, uh, allow us to purchase each year incrementally, uh, going forward, uh, for up to ten years. Now, realistically, in the current marketplace, we are looking at pricing that we will probably be able to achieve below our ceiling rates, uh, for maybe two or three years. But it is an open-ended procurement, and we will be able to go back in and purchase additional years if the pricing that we are able to achieve is below the stated ceilings in the procurement proposal that you all have received. And that is shown on page ten. You can see there that our ceiling rates are set pretty high in the first couple of years, at seven point one cents in twenty twenty-six, um, and, uh, six point seven five cents in twenty twenty-seven, drops down to six point five four in twenty twenty-eight. Those are the maximum permissible rates that we will be able to procure at under this contract. We've always done better than our ceilings. In fact, uh, the last few procurements, we had done better than our expected rates, which are shown on the left-hand side, of six point two five cents for twenty twenty-six, six point oh eight cents for twenty twenty-seven, and five point eight eight cents, uh, for twenty twenty-eight. If we were to move into the marketplace today, uh, based on that forward pricing curve that I just showed you, we would be reasonably optimistic of being able to procure maybe three years at this time. But this, again, leaves the door open so that if we are able to achieve the lower rates in subsequent years and track that curve down in twenty twenty-nine onwards, then we will be able to move into the marketplace, uh, advantageously and lock in a rate that is below what you're currently paying. If that opportunity becomes available, then this procurement is flexible enough to be able to give us the ability to, to knock that out.
Perfect.
Um, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Members, do you have, Commissioner, any questions? Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Mr. Quinn, what about, which of our accounts are you not able to service right now because of the contract or, can you tell us?
Public Power Pool is able only to service accounts that are in the competitive area of ERCOT. That means that any account that is an immunistically controlled area like Denton.
Like DNA.
At most Denton, or any, any accounts that are in a co-op, cooperatively controlled area, any of the rural co-ops cannot be brought into the program.
Which is quite a bit of ours.
Yeah.
That is.
Because CoServe has a bunch of ours.
Yeah.
And then DNA, of course.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
I mean, good and bad, right?
I, I, I think these rates in the competitive marketplace have been significantly below what you're paying.
Oh, I'm sure they are. That's the problem, though.
Yeah.
That's the unfortunate situation, you know, everywhere I've lived in Denton County, almost, I've had to be in a co-op of some sort, which is, again, I don't have a problem with to a certain extent, but there's no way to competitively price that, which, I don't know how that's even free market in, in my mind, but nevertheless, I appreciate what you're doing here for us.
We're only able to do so much within the territorial area that we're allowed to operate inside.
Right.
What you've done is very impressive.
Yeah, that's great.
Utilize more.
Uh, just a, a quick word if I could add, you know, about how we conduct the procurement. When we send out a procurement proposal, it goes out to every registered retail electric provider in the state. We're looking for full competition here, in the belief that that ultimately will deliver the lowest and the best quality price. And, uh, you know, we provide full contract service, uh, at the lowest possible fee. Our, our fee is ninety-nine cents per megawatt hour. Uh, just to be transparent, we show that on the full budget report, exactly how much you pay to us is about two thousand dollars a year, uh, for belonging to this program.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Apparently there's no action, this was just a presentation. Correct, Scott. Well, I want to thank you for being here, thank you for the great work that you are doing, and I appreciate y'all's diligence to this matter, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate the opportunity to come to you today, and my card is in the fold if you have, ever have any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Good news. Next, let's go to item six C, approval evaluation committee's recommendation to rank Alliance Geo-Technical Group Incorporated as the most qualified firm for R S S Q two five two eight five six Geo-Technical Engineering and Material Testing Services, Department of Transportation and Engineering Projects. Chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven A, report from Miss Laney's Equipment and Software Services, this is presented for recording purposes only. Thank you. Next is item seven B, approval to delete the annual car allowance for the chief deputy position, slot number zero nine three S O, with the employee maintaining an assigned county vehicle for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one promotion in the county clerk, one promotion in Justice of the Peace Number Five, and five new hires in the sheriff's office. All of them are detention officer ones.
Perfect, good, thank you so much. Next is item nine A, approval of the regional local services system, local public health services, R L S S L P H S Grant Agreement Contract, H H S zero zero one five eight eight four zero 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 one eight, for fiscal year twenty twenty-six and fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, the amount of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is nine B, approval of the Health and Human Services Commission subcontractor agreement form between Denton County WIC and Abacus Corporation, and any appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is nine C, approval of the Health and Human Services Commission subcontractor agreement form between Denton County WIC and TeleTask Incorporated.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item ten A, approval of preliminary road acceptance of Legacy Ranch Phase Three located in Commissioner Precinct Four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is, under legal fourteen A, approval of change order number nine for the statement of work with Collaborative Solutions LLC for the Enterprise Resource Plan and E R P Software and Implementation Services with a return credit of six hundred and twelve dollars as recommended by Scott Aldridge, Director of Purchasing, Kevin Carr, Director of Technology Services, Chief May County Otter, Cindy Brown Treasure, Alejandro Moreno, Budget Officer, and Gustavo Hernandez, Director of Human Resources. Chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen B, approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Social Services Agreement between Denton County, Texas and Denton County M H M R Center, in the amount of two million, three hundred, ten thousand dollars. This is auto line item zero one, seven two, two five, eight, zero, one, zero. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen C, resolved approval and reratification to correct clerical error regarding funding source in Commissioners Court Number Two Five Zero Two Nine Eight, dated April the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, of agreement of construction of electrical and generator upgrades, Phase One C S V two four two eight three one, between Denton County, Texas, and Real Construction Group LLC, in amount of seven million, eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which amount is inclusive of a contingency amount, the amount of four hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, with funding to come from facilities, line item six six seven six five four nine zero five zero. This is the twenty twelve P I Bond Fund, Phase One Electrical and Generator, and Permanent Improvement Line, item eight zero seven six five four nine zero one zero, Phase One Electrical and Generator.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's go back to item three E, accepted and approval of the twenty twenty-four E S D Number One Financial Report, and any appropriate action. The Chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Yes, go right ahead. Did y'all want to speak? We'd love to hear from y'all. Go right ahead.
Since you're here.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you. So I am no longer the President of Emergency Services District One, but I was during this audit period, and a, a number of things that we were hoping to accomplish while I was on there, we were able to accomplish, and of course, writing the things that needed to be corrected, but also wanting to give you a clean audit, and we were able to do that today. So the audit that you have in front of you has no material findings, no other recommendations, and is completely clean, and the infrastructure and the guardrails and the internal controls are in place, where we were, we're confident that that will be the case moving forward. So just wanted to say thank you for that, thank you for your support, and, uh...
Sheldon, thank you for your service as Chair.
No, no problem.
Appreciate it.
I, I want to say thank you for, Sheldon, this is your last, uh, official action with the court related to the E S D Number One, and I do want to publicly, I've told you for years since you've been on the board, uh, thank you for bringing your sense of, your experience and your sense of professionalism, your heart for public service to the E S D, and you served it nobly and, um, uh, with excellence, and, and through the whole, through the whole time, and through very difficult times, and you righted the ship, and it's evidenced to, again, today by this clean audit. And I just, I just want to, I just want to publicly thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. And it's, it's important that we have people.
Thanks to Chief on, too.
Citizens willing to give of their profession, their little experience to that. Chief, go right ahead, please, sir, we're glad to have you here.
I just want to say thanks for all your support. This is a huge success for us, a, a overwhelming achievement. A few months ago, I presented, uh, we discussed our strategic plan that our, not only E S D One, but E S D Two boards approved, and, uh, you know, there's six initiatives, twenty-four goals, setting down objectives, uh, and of which, currently, we're over twenty percent done with those. But the one I'm most proud of, I think all of our team is most proud of, is this audit coming back. Uh, we set an objective, we said, within three years, uh, we would have an audit, an annual audit, that would have no material weakness, and I'm not an accountant, but I've been told that that's a pretty big thing.
It is.
So, so to have that and to already have it in year one i- is important because, you know, it restores accountability, it restores, you know, transparency, and more importantly, it restores the public trust of those we serve. And I'm very proud of that for that reason, and none of that would have happened without the support of this court, uh, the community we serve, and just the team that I have and the staff we have, and our board of commissioners, and I'm very grateful, and I'm very honored to be here, and I'm very thankful, and thank you so much for all your support.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Perfect, thank you so much. All right, let's go to item seventeen, community updates. We'll start with Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. I just have one thing, congratulations to Brina Nix, uh, a Denton citizen who is now in the top seven of American Idol, which is, that's pretty impressive. Uh, the competition continues on Sunday, May eleventh, at seven P M., so obviously, we want to, uh, wish her the best of luck, and then obviously, we have quite a few, uh, baseball and softball teams in Denton County that are in the playoffs, and we want to wish them continued luck. That's all I have, Judge.
Perfect, good, thank you. Go right ahead. Commissioner Falconer.
Thanks, Judge. Uh, I've got a, a couple of items here, I just wanted to mention, um, the Callis Lee, um, who is a softball player at Creekview High School in Carrollton, uh, was nominated as Athlete of the Week by Star Local Media, and, uh, by the way, she's thrown sixteen hundred pitches and, uh, recorded eighty-six strikeouts. And then also, um, this is a, been a long time, uh, coming, but, uh, D C T A announced that, um, we, the D C T A, the A train would be, uh, connecting with the Silverline Dart, uh, Silverline in Carrollton, in downtown Carrollton. We've been working on that for quite a long time, and it's the right thing to do, and glad that that is finally accomplished.
Perfect, good, thank you, sir. All right, Commissioner Edmondson?
Well, first of all, let me report for my, my missing colleague, Commissioner Mitchell. For Precinct Three, Highland Village is having movies in the park, uh, May ninth, and it's Inside Out is the movie that they're going to show. And Lake Dallas will have their trade days and farmer's market, uh, May tenth, from eight to noon, behind the First Baptist Church. Louisville has Sounds of Louisville, um, May sixth, seven to nine, uh, and it's in the Wayne Ferguson Plaza, and then there's a Mother's Day brunch and game day, uh, from ten to twelve-thirty at, uh, Valley Parkway with Thrive. So lots is always going on in Precinct Three. Precinct Four, we have in Argyle, the Argyle Hazardous Waste disposal. Doesn't that sound exciting? But it is a necessary thing. Uh, in Denton, we're going to have Twilight Tunes on May eighth, six-thirty, and there's going to be a flowering plant sale at the Denton Senior Center on May ninth at nine AM. You can learn from a master gardener about the flowering plants that give year-round color in your landscape. May tenth is the World Migratory Bird Day, so from seven-thirty in the morning till noon, uh, Clark Creek Natural Heritage Center, people will be birdwatching. Shadowfield Garden Tour will be May tenth, from nine to three, and that's on Nottingham Drive, part of the Denton County Master Gardener's Garden Tour. The Ninth Annual Explorium Toucha Truck will be May tenth, from ten to two, at the C H Collins Athletic Complex, a family friendly, friendly event for kids to explore emergency vehicles, big rigs, trucks, tractors, and more. And then in Flower Mound, there's Lakeside Music Services, May ninth, seven-thirty to nine-thirty, at Lakeside D F W. That's it, Judge.
Perfect, good, thank you. I do want to remind everybody that National Small Business Week, where ninety-nine percent of all businesses are small here in the U S, and that we have some wonderful small business all across Denton County, so that is when it's time to, to, um, do business with our, continue to do business with our small businesses. Twilight Tunes at the Courthouse on the Square, our Denton Main Street presents Twilight Tunes each year, and this week on Thursday, the Sunday Records Country Band will be at the Courthouse on the Square for live music from six-thirty to eight. And, uh, and again, we have our, our Denton County, uh, Master Gardener's Garden Tour, will be this, this Saturday, May the tenth, from nine to three, so that they have a great... May the tenth, from nine to three, so that they had a great, a great event for everybody. All right, let's go to item fifteen A, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property, close meaning deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Deliberation openly would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body negotiates with a third person, and it is ten oh seven, we are in executive session. Thank you.